Good morning! I need to fix my lights. Alright, so now it's working a bit better. I thought about spending this afternoon figuring out how to play poker aces after 3-bet on certain boards and we're going to use mainly poker 2s just to see how often opponents have hands and then we can use PLO visions to explore some of those boards, how would solver play and figure out why it does so. But it's pretty common situation in PLO. Let's say that we are definitely out of position which means that let's say that cut-off opens, we are on the small blind, we raise poker aces, big blind folds and the cut-off calls. So here we are with the SPR around 3 and half and our hand makes some aceace jack7 type of hand. And the flop comes queen 5-3. Boom, we completely missed the board. How do we play? This happens very often in PLO. And a lot of players struggle. Should we bet big? Should we bet small? Should we check? And what if the opponent bets a raises? Do we stack off? Do we bet fold? Do we call his raise? What in the world should we do? And for starters, let's see, let me open the PLO visions. Well, let's change the board a little. Let's make it or do we have here? Let's make it queen 6-4. And let me just make the suits so it's it's easier to watch when we have all the same suits. And here let us have this kind of hand so we don't have even a backdoor flush draw. Here's the PLO visions. Approach is that out of position 3-bet is going to bet well, it's against the bottom range but it's pretty much the same. Yeah, the bottom range is a bit wider but small blind 3-bet versus bottom 5 and cut-off is almost the same. And good morning to me. So you can see that here the 3-bet is going to pot over half of his range. Because one of the reasons is that button cannot connect with the board that often. And then when we see how often we do that when we have poker aces. Here on the bottom left, I'm sorry, but I'm right. We can see that with poker aces, it pots 76% of the times and that's the sizing that solver uses. And here we can see what kind of hand it pots with. And the only hand that it does bet smaller some of the time is when there's 2 backdoor flush draws. And these are strong ones that have a lot of backdoor equity. There's 2 backdoor flush draws, backdoor straight draw or poker aces, aceace queen 6, top 2 pair with 2 backdoor flush draws. The strongest of the poker aces with backdoor flush draws. It bets half a pot. So you can see here aceace queen 4 when it has a queen, 2 backdoor flush draws, it's just the half a pot. And then when it goes to this aceace jack 5, so there's no backdoor straight draws, then it likes to pot half the time. But you can see that solver is very aggressive on this board. And we should be too. I will show you why. Let's keep cut-off, normal cut-off range, 30% and he would fold bet aces. And especially as small stakes, no one folds to 3-bets. They call even with rainbow kings. That's the common way that people are playing. So we can give him straight 30% opening range, exclude aces and that's the range he has here. And our try aces is 62-38 favorite. So versus this range, we are in a fine shape. If we want to know how often he has a better hand, how often cut-off has a 6-4+ which is already better made hand? Let's wait for the poker 2s card. He has better hand 15% of times. And even when he has, we still have 17% equity, so we are not drawing dead. So 85% of times, we have the best hand here. So it's pretty clear that we want to bet. We don't want to give any free cards because he has 40% equity on average. And once we bet, let's say let's go back a little. Because before we talk about sizings, then solver uses on this board either a pot sizing or half a pot sizing. And we can see that the half a pot is reserved for only the strongest of the hands. The aces with either some main hands on the flop or 3 backdoor draws at least. Or aceace 5-5 that mocks the straight draw, the straight draw on the board. So the strongest of poker aces here use half a pot and the rest use full pot. And the reason for that is that if we bet full pot, we want to maximize the fold equity. Like here, when we have try aces, if opponent folds, on average, he's folding 40% equity. Of course, he's not folding 40% equity. But he's folding some equity, we win the hand, we don't have to play nasty turns. Our hand doesn't improve on the turn. The only good turn is ace. Everything else is a potential scare card. So these aceace jack 7 with diamonds, it has a really bad playability on the turn. Because on the turn, the hand doesn't improve. If we look here from the solver, aceace jack 10 double suited. Any turn of hearts, any turn of clubs, any turn of 9 or higher gives a rap. So suddenly, there's slightly over half of the depth that improves our hand, so we have a really good playability. We don't mind playing the turn that much. And when we have a really strong hand, we don't mind the opponent calling with the worse hand. Because our equity is so much higher versus his calling range. So the reason why we have 2 sizings is that we want to achieve 2 different things. And especially with sorry, especially in 3-bet pots with aces, we should have 2 sizings. One is we bet sizing and one is smaller. And depending on the board, this is so dry that half a pot is fine. If it was monotone, we could use 1/3 or full pot. And then of course, we have the check. And very often, the check one is either check calling or check folding. So we used to pot bet because we benefit from opponent folding. It's a hand we are not super happy to stack off, but we would stack off. Like here, we are not happy to get the money in on this board. We are not crossing opponent. If he stacks off here with any hand of queen or better. So any main hand of queen 2 pairs, we don't even include any straight draws here. We are flipping 50-50. So any random queen, even king king queen, which he's not doing. So in reality versus his stack-off range, we are small underdogs. So we are not happy to stack off. We would do it, I will explain in a bit why. But if he folds, we are happy. So we use the pot bet to prevent him from making any lose calls and maximize the fold equity. If we have a monster, aceace queen 6, we are happy to stack off. We don't mind, we want him to call with those dominated hands. That's when we use smaller sizing. And if we are bluffing here, let's say we had a hand like this one, then we could use the half a pot sizing to balance. So we use the smaller sizing with the bluffs, with the monsters. And then we use the pot sizing mainly with hands that we are happy to stack off, but we're also happy if opponent folds. Or we are not that super happy to stack off. But I hope you hit the point. If you don't, if my explanation was confusing, then just let me know. But the weakest of our stack-off hands we pot and the strongest of our hands, we can bet half a pot here. Or we can use slightly smaller sizing. If we choose, it depends on the SPR. Because even if we have a strong hand like monster and we bet half a pot, when opponent calls, we can get the money in by the river. So we can use the small sizing and still stack off. So opponent has 6-4 15% of times. Then he has a queen 20% of times. Of course, queen plus was a bit weird because it includes all the poker kings. If he has a queen without 2 pairs, then we actually have 60% equity around, so it's 60-40. If he shoves with queen, jack 10, 9, it's 60-40 flip. But 35% of times, he has either one of those. And then we can add some open enders that he's going to call here. He might actually let's put here a 4, a 6 or queen and then the straight draw. So these are the hands he's going to call here or continue. Any 2 pair, any 1 pair and open enders and wraps. So around 60% of times, he hits the board in some way which means that most likely 40% of times he's going to fold. Unless he calls with poker kings with his kind of bad strategy. If he has a king king jack 10 with 2 backdoor flush draws, he might do it. But it's very small portion of his range. So here's pretty much his continuation range. And we can say that even versus his continuation range, we are flipping. We are doing just fine. But if we pot, he's probably going to fold a lot of his 1 pair hands, one of his open ender hands, which means that he's folding almost 50% equity, which is huge for us. Now, the reason if we bet here and let's say we bet full pot with like this hand. And now if he shoves, we need 32% equity to call. And if his shoving range is 2 pairs or better, we have a read that he never semi-bluffs here. Then we need to stack off. If his shoving range is 6-4+ it becomes quite easy. Because he has 83% equity, we have only 17, we need 32. So the question is, when we give him his raising range, do we have 33% equity or not? That's whether we call or not. So it depends on the board, but it also depends on the opponent. What a normal ref would do here is that he shoves definitely any 2 pairs or better. Then he is going to bet any pair with the straight draw. And well, let's see first. So he has 1 pair and at least open ender. It includes all the 1 pair and wraps. Which means that he's flipping, so if we fold aces, it's huge for him. We have 20% equity. So we need to add more to his range. And then if we add any queen, which is on this board, quite reasonable that rec start to raise if they put us on aces. So once we add that long queen into his raising range, now we have 42 and we need to stack him. So on this board, your main question would be that does he raise here queen jack 10 type of hand? He knows he has 40% versus aces. And he knows he should have fold equity. And this would be quite simple if we use the sizing like 2 thirds or half a pot. Now, the thing is that if we pot, it looks really strong. Because now we have only 1 pot sizing bet behind. So if he shoves, he shouldn't expect a lot of fold equity. In a 3-bet pot on the flop, when we pot this flop, we are telling our opponent that, hey man, I'm playing for stacks. Which means that in theory, his raising range should be stronger. He shouldn't raise any queen access, he should just see the turn often. So when we bet pot, we manipulate his stack-off range. And if he's a king king player, his stack-off range should be a lot tighter. So we can pretty much make it 2 pairs or some kind of pair and a straight draw type of hand. Which means that we have only 21% equity, we can fold. So with these aces on this board, we can pot and then we can fold. Because our pot sizing affects his raising range. If we do the different thing, we bet half a pot, now it looks like we have a bet-fold range. If you see my streams or videos, I often talk about in 3-bet pots. With that sizing, he has a bet-fold range. Because normally, when people pot at small stakes on the 3-bet pot, they are playing for stacks. That's what they're doing. And with half a pot, they are actually bet folding. So in reality, what people do with these kind of hands, they bet half a pot because they are afraid to risk too much because they are not playing for stacks. So they are bet and folding. And when they actually have that aceace queen 6, they are potting because they have a strong hand, let's play for stacks. And they would benefit from making it the other way around. Potting with this kind of hands and then if the opponent shoves, your question is to think, how wide his range is? Do we have information? Have we seen him shoving lightly? If he shoves queen X, we call. If he's shoving range is mainly 2 pairs or better, we fold. But if you are here in the cut-off and let's say you have this hand, queen jack 10 with a backdoor flush draw. If opponent bets half a pot, let's say that you have to raise. Are you more happy to raise this c-bet? When opponent bets half a pot, you put him on aces? Or when opponent bets full pot? So you're raising this hand more when opponent bets half a pot. So versus half a pot c-bet, the opponent should raise with wider range. And now when our half a pot range is actually stronger than our full pot range, boom, it works our favor heavily. We have more value for the strong hands and we can more folds for the slightly weaker hands. So if we bet pot and then opponent shoves, then the question is what should we do? Because we have to pay 65 in the pot of 200, so 33% equity. And the borderline here is how wide his stack-off range is. It's not possible to say that should you always stack off? Should you always bet fold with pot? It depends on the board and it depends how wide the opponent is shoving. There are people who shove here any straight draw, just want to gamble. And then there are nits who don't even raise 2 pairs because they're afraid you might suck out. So you have to play with this on any equity calculator. See what is your equity versus different ranges and understand what we need to have. Okay, let's change the board a little. So these 1 high, 2 lows, that's somewhat simple. So let's take the same one with the suits. You can see that the out of position 3-bet only see pots here 11% of times. On the rainbow, it was 50%. So there's a huge difference how solver plays rainbows and suited boards. Now if you use half a pot, way more. And here we have on the right, our poker aces. And we can see that it mainly pots when it has aces with the flush draw. Whether it's the not flush draw, whether it's the non-not flush draw. If it has, oh, where it is? I lost. Here is, if it had aces with the flush draw with only 2 hearts, it's betting half a pot mainly. Most of times, half a pot. So when the flush draw is not super strong, like 3 of hearts, you're blocking one of your own outs, it wants to pot a bit more to benefit from the fold equity. Because the playability is once again a bit poorer. And here's a hand, once again, half a pot with the hands that have more playability. Not so strong aces with backdoor flush draw, super strong hands, aces with the flush draw, with the Broadway cards, sorry, with the Broadway card and a blocker with backdoor flush draw. So once again, the solver pattern is that the more you have playability along with your core showdown value with poker aces, the more you have playability, the stronger hand you have for the turn. And the easier it is to play the turn when the SPR is a bit higher. If we pot and opponent calls, we have SPR 1 on the turn. So on turn, it's pretty much shove or check situation. It's easier to play when the turn doesn't help us that often. But the better playability we have, the easier it is to play the turn if the SPR is 2. Because then sometimes, we have to bet the river. If turn SPR is 1, we don't have to play the rivers. We either shove the turn or, well, if we check, we have to bet. But it's on our hand if we want to bet the river. So now when there's flush draw, same board, but with the flush draw, solver likes to bet way less, from 50 down to 10. And here is how it plays aces overall. And now it's still, the overall betting amount is 60%. Quite similar to before, but now it uses half a pot way more. Because now the thing is that you don't have that much fold equity. So even with this type of hands, now it wouldn't make sense to pot because the opponent doesn't fold that often. Because now, we have all the same kinds of hands in his range and then we have the flush draws too. Oops, let's take away those ones. Last time on the flop, we were around 60-40, slightly above 60% equity. Here at 39, now he has 46. So his overall equity goes up. And now when we add all the flush draws to his range, it goes from 60 to 75. So now he hits the board with his cut-off range somehow 75% of times. Which means that the fold equity goes most likely from 40 to 25. So we don't get that much folds. So with this hand where we missed the board, now it doesn't make sense to pot. Because the opponent is not folding. We are missing on the visions. It's really limited because we have only 50% and pot. We don't have 66% or 75%, which I would much rather use here. Or then I would use 1/3 to induce something. Like if we had aceace queen with not flush draw, we could bet 1/3. And with our opponent in a tough decision. But now on this board, when it's more like that opponent has something, we mostly bet full pot with the flush draw. Or some kind of aceace queen 6, of course. Well, that I would use probably half a pot. Let's see what it does with aceace queen. Okay, it pots 1/3, bluffs 40%. So half a pot with the strongest ones and half a pot with the flush blocker. So once again, it uses the same concept that the monsters we bet smaller and with the pot, it's pretty much the with vulnerable hands that also block the opponent's calling range. Like when we have the hard blocker, if you have what's poker strategy stream about blockers, then you know how the even single hard blocker can affect his ranges. So the solver has the pattern in those situations that we use smaller sizings with polarized range and then the pot sizing with more merge that's between the polarized ranges if we want to bet. If opponent, well, he can't really exploit that because if we pot here, there's not much he can do. He cannot make moves. He can't raise with air unless he knows that we are pot folding. But probably he should, if he's very aggressive versus our pot size bet and more cautious to our half a pot sizing, then all we have to do is couple of times pot with the monsters and he stacks off with 0 equity. So it's another good way to assess. So here, remember that on the rainbow board, with try aces, we can pot and then either pot kane or pot fold. If there's a flush- If there's a flush draw, we can use half a pot sizing. And where did our vision go? Ace, ace, check seven. Ace, ace, check seven. And no suits. So ace, ace, check seven, it's going to actually check 100% of times. So he doesn't even bet it. I'm thinking about that on small stakes, I would be quite happy very often to bet this one. Because if this is his continuation range. Let's put this one aside. So this is his continuation range. We have 45% versus his continuation range and he's folding 25. So it becomes, it's not usually profitable. But if we say that he would raise any two pairs or better, then versus his just calling range, we have 53 versus 47. And there's a lot of turns that we can barrel and bluff. Because if your options are check call or bet and he calls, I think with betting, your turn is going to be a bit more easier. Because once we check, we are guaranteed to see the turn. And we are guaranteeing the opponent that he can see the turn. If we bet, then we give him an opportunity to fold. And whatever he's folding, he's folding equity for sure. So if the EV is very close between checking or betting half a pot, I recommend betting because you have a way to win the hand there. Pick up 24 BBs from the pot. Instead of taking passive, because if you check call, you're very lost on the turn. So if I would check here, let's say I timeout and opponent bets 16 or 18, I would just fold because this hand has a very bad playability. I mean, really, really bad. Let's say the button bets half a pot and we are here with ace, ace, check. It says solver is check fold in ace, ace, check seven. Yeah, what it means is here we can see what ace, ace, check seven without the hearts, without the spades. It's just a check fold to half a pot bet. And on average, in three bet pots, most days you have around 40% fold equity on average. It depends on the board, but one high, two low is kind of board where I would just bet half a pot. You can even bet, it's what opponents, you can bet one third and just give him a reason to fold his air. Because you don't want to check and then he makes a stab with his air and you start to fold pocket aces. So you can bet small with aces on almost any board. And on average, you have, if we bet half a pot, then we need 33% fold equity. And on average, we have 40. So even if we bet one, half a pot on any board, on average, we make profits with the c-bets. If we bet one third here, then we need 25% fold equity. So even if he's calling with everything that hits the board, we have 25% fold equity. And versus his calling range, we have 53% equity. So betting one third starts to sound like a pretty good thing. Solver checks folds because if solver checks, he knows that card of probably doesn't bluff many hands. He might bluff with an ace of hard blocker. So solver strategies versus another solver strategy. So the solver knows what range his opponent is playing and knows how to respond to that. In reality, if we check, we don't know if he bets half a pot with check, check, then nine. Trying to stab the pot or ace, ten, nine, nine. He has nothing, so let's try bet half a pot. What if he folds and if we check for aces, that's really bad. So if you're not sure, you can always make a small c-bet. And in three bet pots, the opponents don't attack your small c-bet sizing. What I have seen is when I, even on these boards or monotone boards, even in multi-way boards, I mean, I've been so often in four-way pot, I three bet aces and boom, 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 three callers. And then we have a four-way pot SPR one and a half. And the board is monotone, I don't have any of that suit. And it looks like, okay, the chance of someone having the flush is really high. Well, it is really high. It's around one out of five for each of those. So suddenly it becomes like almost 60% chance that someone has a flush. I make one third sizing c-bet. Has to work 25% of times. If they fold everything but the flushes, we have 40% fold equity. If they call with sets and two pairs, okay, we have 30% fold equity. We need 25. So even in multi-way pots, c-betting one third on monotone board actually looks very strong to the opponent. They think that why does he bet so small? He has to have the nuts. And there's a huge fold equity on those monotone and paired boards when you bet one third. Because opponents are suspicious. In thinner race pots, if you bet really small, you won't raise quite often because they get a real good price for the raise. And they see that you're betting here with the wide range. When the same thing happens in three bet pots, people don't do this races because they would have the same risk reward race. So they have the same odds for the races, but they don't do it because they see that in a pick pot, you bet small, they hit suspicious and they are afraid to pull the trigger. What I have done, if opponent bet small on these boards, I often raise because we can really good price. So let's say that hero bets here with eight. Now there's 32 in the pot. So let's change his sizing to 32. Boom, so-called 50-50 race and you would fold aces. So you can exploit the small bets too. This has to work 50% of times. And versus most opponents, they do the exact thing that they bet really small with weak hands and if they had aces with hearts, they would go bigger. While in reality, they should do probably the other way around. Hello there, once again on the lurk mode. Well, you can see this on YouTube. So about the sizing, if you are the one who uses big sizing with big hands in three bet pots, smaller sizing with smaller hands, try switching it around. You get more value for your strong hands, you can more folds on your weaker hand. Let's do one more because now we have one high, two lows. So high, low, low boards. And those are really good because they disconnect with the opponent's range. So let's take a queen high board, let's make it first rainbow. And let's take a bit more connected queen then seven. All right? And then we have pocket aces. And backdoor flush draw, yeah, I want to do. So with the pocket aces, it's going to bet half a pot 50% of times, bet 30%. So really high on the numbers. And what was the board? Where did I lose my visions? Queen then seven. Check, let's do something like this. Now versus the card of range, we are 65, 35 favorite. Because we have the cut shot, let's not have a cut shot. So we have just a three aces. Okay, so 50 is 45, almost 50-50 versus card of range. And here, overall with ace, solver loves to pot 30% of hands, which is quite a lot, but it checks also quite heavily. So here are the hands that if he has aces with backdoor blockers, he likes to pot. But let's see if we have missed the board, ace, ace, three, nine. So we miss the board pretty heavily. And let's say we have that one backdoor flush draw. So ace, ace, three, nine. Yeah, only one backdoor one, yeah. Half a pot with pretty much all the time. How much does affect the solver if we take away the only backdoor flush draw? Oh, it's still half a pot bet. All right? That's a bit weird. The card of hits this board so often. So he will call with any queen, any ten, any seven, including two pairs and sets. And then he's going to call with all kinds of straights. Oh, yeah, it's rainbow, that's why he bets. I'm quite sure it changes a lot when we put flush draw there. Okay, so we have almost 40% fold equity. So half a pot makes sense. Forgot it was a rainbow, my bad. So yeah, rainbow board, bet half a pot even with three aces. Queen then seven with the suit. And once again, you can see that overall switch is now it pots very rarely. C-bet still half a pot. And if we have ace, ace, three, nine, without any backdoors, it's going to check 100% of times and it's going to check fold. Because now when we add the flush draw to the opponent's continuation range. Hello, okay, now it works. There's 15% of flush draw. So now opponent has a hand almost 80% of times. So you see the difference from 40% fold equity to 20% of fold equity. And we have nothing. So it's a spot where sometimes we just check four aces. And this is one of those boards because opponent connects with the board in a decent way. At least around 80% of times with his range. So we don't have fold equity and his calling range has around 45% equity versus us. So we are not even crossing his calling range. So we can just check. Sometimes he checks and we can go to showdown versus ace, queen, pocket kings. But basically, when we completely miss the board and it's so connected with the opponent's range, we can just check fold. It's not holding. In PLO, it's completely fine to check fold premium hand. So we have ace, ace, king, king, double suited. And the flop is 10, nine, seven without our flush draw. So our hand turns into a paper. to make it short, on rainbow boards, we c-bet aces pretty much always. Then it's about how strong our hand is outside the pocket ace part of our hand. We pot with very polarized range. So we pot with our, sorry, we bet half a pot or smaller with polarized range. Which means that we bet half a pot with the bluffs, get a really good price and we bet half a pot with the monsters. So the opponent cannot just attack our small sizing. And then we pot with the hands between those two to create fold equity. And versus his calling range, we have a good equity. If the opponent shoves, it's pretty much how wide he shoves. And you can play with equity calculators to see where is the threshold. Like if the board was that, oh boy, queen six, four. Queen six, four rainbow, the borderline, does he raise queen X? If he does, we stack off. If he doesn't, we pot fold. Oh, hello, you missed. We're just about to end the session. And I'm probably going to actually play a small session of party poker fast forward. Need points for the leaderboards. So going to kick in, hope there's games running. But there's a short session about aces. And once you get these few basic principles and then you play with auto oracle, poker choose, Omaha Equilab, whatever, and just play around and see how often opponent hits certain boards. So what are the tri-boards that doesn't connect with his range? And what are the boards that connect with his range? Then it's quite easy for you because first you identify the flop, then you identify how strong your hand is and boom, save your sizing. We either bet big, we either bet small or either we check. But as a rule of thumb, it's smaller mistake, especially when the board is like this, it's smaller mistake to just bet and kane in with aces than start to make bet folds or check folds. Because like here, versus his range, we are 70, 30. So it's not the spot that he can exploit your shitloads by shoving lightly. So we make a lot of money by betting and if he has two pairs, we have equity. Sometimes he shoves with queen X, we have 60, 40. So instead of bet folding these flops all the time, as a rule of thumb, when the SPR is three and a half or lower, it's more a mistake to stack off with aces with high frequency than start to bet fold with high frequency. So don't be afraid to kane in in low SPR situations with pocket aces. All right, thanks for this. And I will restart the stream with the three minute delay and play some fast forward to collect some points. So see you soon. And if you watched this on YouTube, then I will see you on the next video. Thanks and bye-bye.